Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to welcome you to the fifth and final public hearing on the New York State Foundation Aid Formula. My name is Anita Murphy. I am a recently retired district superintendent for Capitol Region BOSI's. And before that, I was a superintendent of schools and was a deputy superintendent in large cities for many years. It's nice to be home. I am joined today by the president of the Rockefeller Institute, Mr. Robert Magna, Bryan Backstrom, the director of education policy studies for the Rockefeller Institute, Dr. Lisa Parshall. Lisa is a distinguished professor of political science at Damon University and a Rockefeller Institute fellow, and Dr. Lucy Sorenson, associate professor of public policy administration at the University of Albany. Just a couple of housekeeping notes. As a reminder, this hearing is being livestreamed and will be posted online shortly after the hearing this evening. Some of you may be recognizable in the audience, and by staying here, you are consenting to be, to the possibility of being in the background. A couple of the other things that you should know, we are being joined today by our ASL interpreter, who is on the left side of the stage. And although we do not have simultaneous interpretation services, the transcript for today's hearing will be translated into multiple languages and posted online for public access. If you have questions about the foundation aid study, or about this hearing, or if you need assistance with anything, please talk to our lovely staff who is in the back of the room and out at the tables. Emergency exits are located to the back of the auditorium. I don't think there's any on the sides. And the ladies' room and men's room are down the hall, follow the signs. Before we begin, I'm going to ask everybody if they would please silence their cellphones. We want the panel to be able to hear all the verbal testimony, so maintaining quiet in this room is critically important. On behalf of the Rockefeller Institute, we would like to express our sincere thanks and gratitude to the staff at the Gilderlin Central School District and Marie Wiles, the superintendent who is here. Thank you, Marie. Thank you, guys, for being incredibly gracious hosts. It looks like it's easy. These things take months to set up. I'd also like to thank all of you for being here today. So, the purpose of this hearing is to hear the voices of the New York State community on the foundation aid formula. New York's budget, the 2425 budget, called for the Rockefeller Institute to conduct a study to assess how the state's foundation aid formula, to discuss the formula and discuss potential modifications to how that formula works. As a part of the study, the researchers at the Rockefeller Institute are collecting feedback from the public and from education stakeholders, both through online submission and in-person testimony. If you are providing testimony today and would like to also submit that testimony online, the website for you to do that is right up, rockins.org/FA. We would encourage you to do that. And if folks do not finish their testimony today, and I stop you, please submit your testimony online also. Each one of our invited stakeholders is assigned a six-minute time slot. Once you start, we will start the timer. If you're standing up here testifying, there's a timer right in front of you. At the half-minute mark, it will change color, and at the one-minute mark, it will change color again. Please be mindful of the timer. We want everybody to be able to testify, and I will stop you directly at six minutes. If you would, again, like to share additional remarks, please do that online. Everything that is shared, both here and online, will be read and incorporated. Just a reminder, we are here to talk about the foundation aid formula, not education policy. What Rockefeller was asked to do is to look at the formula, and that's what they are doing. They will not be discussing education policy. So, thank you all again, and I'm going to turn it over to Bob Magna to say a couple of words. Bob?
I just want to welcome everyone here today. I think what we want to do is get right to the testimony. Very quickly, I would remind folks, this is, as Anita said, our final public hearing, but people can still submit written testimony to us. And I would say, and some of the folks in the audience know this, that at the Rockefeller Institute, we're available to, you know, discuss these issues on an ongoing basis. And so, it's certainly not the last time people will have to talk to us about this report. This kind of gives the timeline that we've been working under, which was very short. And so, we went from the enacted state budget to waking Bob up at midnight, to the final report being due in the beginning of December. And this is a complicated formula. One of the good things about being with this group today is I know we have a lot of experts with us, and I'm sure they'll be giving us their opinion on what we should be focused on and what we should be concentrating on. So, with that, I'll have Bryan and Lisa and Lucy introduce themselves quickly, and let's get started.
Again, I'm Bryan Backstrom. I'm the director of education policy studies here at the Rockefeller Institute.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Lisa Parshall. I'm a professor of political science at Damon University, which is in Amherst, New York, out in the western part of the state, and I'm a policy fellow at the Rockefeller Institute.
Hello, everyone. My name's Lucy Sorenson. I'm an associate professor at University of Albany-Suni, and thank you all so much for being here and sharing your insights.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So, I'm going to call you up here and ask that folks come up to the stage, use the microphone. You can enter either through there, I wouldn't walk up those stairs, or around the side. It's fine. Great. Melinda Person, president of the New York State United Teachers.
Hello. Good afternoon. It's a little weird to be here. The last time I was on this stage was 1993's production of Brigadoon here at GHS, so it's a little weird. But, I digress. My name is Melinda Person, and I am the president of New York State United Teachers, the union representing nearly 700,000 educators and other professionals in New York State. I was born and raised here in the Capitol Region. I attended Gilderlin Public Schools. I'm a proud graduate 30 years ago this year. I'm also the mother of four children who attend Gilderlin Public Schools, so this is really a homecoming for me in more ways than one. The foundation aid formula is near and dear to me, not only because it directly affects teaching and learning in every New York State school, but because I've been here for every step of the conversation. My 11th grade social studies teacher, Mr. Milligan, who's here today in the front row, he told me about the CFE case in 1993, when it was filed. And I remember hearing about the constitutional right to a sound, basic education, and I observed, as a 17-year-old, that 40 years after Brown versus Board of Education, we still had a separate and unequal education system in New York State and across the nation. Later in life, as a young staffer at the state capitol, I worked on this issue deciphering equations and acronyms that built the formula in 2007. So, I'm one of the few people who understand that chart up on the screen. With NISIT, I joined the decades-long battle to fully fund foundation aid, and last year, we celebrated like crazy when that finally happened for the first time in state history. This is a remarkable achievement, but it took decades, and in that time, the devastating effects of chronic underfunding of our public schools had taken root. Since 2007, our schools are significantly different than they were back then. And over the past few hearings, you've heard from so many of my colleagues, educators, who've testified about what they've seen firsthand, and I'm just going to echo a few of the points they've made. Our student demographics are rapidly shifting. Our kids are showing up to school with bigger and more urgent needs, and our schools are playing a larger role in the lives of our students and families than ever before. Across the state, from the largest cities to the most rural counties, nearly 1 in 5 of our students, 1 in 2 in Rochester or Syracuse, are entering our classrooms with the physical and emotional burdens of poverty. New York State's child poverty rate is one of the worst in the nation, ranking 41st nationally, according to a recent report by Comptroller DiNapoli. We are also seeing greater and more complex mental health conditions among our students that require care from specialists, counselors, and psychologists. Children cannot learn when they're hungry. They cannot focus when they're worried about whether they will have a place to sleep at night. They cannot rise to their true potential when they're dealing with untreated health conditions. Our current formula, which uses old data, does not properly account for the fact that schools are doing more than ever before, and our schools have become the social safety net for New York's children and families. In Brentwood on Long Island, schools are the central hub for the diverse suburban community. On top of the normal costs of educating kids, schools feed kids with food pantries, they run clothing drives, they do translation services for families. In Deposit in rural Delaware County, geographic isolation means the school is the only lifeline for miles for students. It is often the only way some students will have access to diverse cultural experiences that expose them to the world. And while some districts have seen enrollment declines in recent years, this does not necessarily mean they need fewer resources. Building, infrastructure, staffing, program, and service costs are unchanged, and in many cases, the formula has not kept up with these changes. Some of this means simply updating elements of the foundation aid formula, and we will submit written testimony about which specific elements we think need updating. The pupil needs index, the regional cost, all of these have been discussed at length, the need to bring us up to the most recent data. But we also need to reevaluate measures like English language learners, homelessness, and enrollment growth, how those are dealt with in the formula. We've talked a lot this year about the SAVE-HARMLESS provision, which is an important mechanism for giving school districts a sense of fiscal stability, but that is only one small sliver of the total foundation aid picture and conversation. So much has changed since Mr. Milligan first explained school funding to me 30 years ago, but one thing has not. The guiding question should be, how can we fund our schools so that we provide all of New York students with the public education we promised them in our state constitution? The question should not be, how can we manipulate this formula to fit into a box or save money? Constitutional commitments are just that, commitments. And as my daughter, Lindy, starts kindergarten here in Gilderlin in two weeks, I am keenly aware of the impact these decisions will have on students and families in this generation. As we examine how to create foundation aid 2.0, we must start with what we know, that schools are the centers of our communities, that they provide a social safety net for New York's families, and fully funded public schools will determine the future of our great state.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Michael Mulgrew, president of the United Federation of Teachers.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having all of these hearings. And I know that the Rockefeller Foundation is under a very difficult timeline, but this is an important issue. And my name is Michael Mulgrew. I'm the president of the United Federation of Teachers of New York City. This formula came to birth in 2007. In 2007, I was in a basement classroom in Coney Island, Brooklyn, teaching to an at-risk program. As a teacher, you understand that there is so much more of a need for your students, and you constantly scramble and try to figure out ways where you can get more support for each of your students. You become quite frustrated when you realize we spend so much money in our own, paying taxes ourselves, but we do not have the services that we need for the students, and their families have such a hard time getting access to these services. And that's where we were in 2007. And this was supposed to help that, and it did, but it clearly does not meet the needs of the school system now. From that point to now, it is, as Melinda has just spoken very eloquently, the schools have become much more of the social safety network for each community. That was never the intent. When we were grow, when I was growing up, the school was there to teach you your academics so you could move forward and develop you as a person. It was not, never intended to be the social safety network that has now become everywhere, and this is what we are facing. There is a fear that this process is about figuring out a way to cut school funding. Well, let's just put this out there, okay? We do a lot of advocacy. We, we work with our members to make sure that they understand that they're not alone, that they're facing these challenges, we are all doing this together. But this foundation aid formula change needs to be done, and I don't think that's in dispute anymore by anyone. So, what are the things we have to do with it? I'll just go quickly over some of them. We need to construct a new model for the basic per-pupil cost, right? And we have data now, much better data than we did in 2007, when people were trying to figure this out. We need the weights for students in temporary housing and foster care for our English language learners. We cannot have a one-size-fits-all weight for students with disabilities. That is insane. It makes no sense. If you think it costs the same for a child who is just getting, maybe getting one single support service to a child who has severe medical and emotional disabilities, that is just wrong, and it has done a very, very great disservice for our school system. The, the regional cost index, as Melinda said, has to be updated, as well as the methods we use to identify students' economic needs. And I know that this, this process is about the formula itself, but I will make one policy statement. When the funds get to the school district, they need to be spent on what they were intended for, because that is not happening in a lot of places. So, as we move forward, we are committed to working with the Rockefeller Institute, the state legislature, the governor, state education department, whoever we need to work with, because we know that this is such an important piece. We hear constantly that, oh, education funding keeps going up, but the other part of that argument is that you're asking the schools to do more than they have ever been intended to do. So, we're, we're, we take that responsibility on. We know it's not, you know, people, when they first get into education, like, wow, this isn't fair that we're responsible, we really have to do all these other things. But it's our job to help that child develop, so we're going to do that. The teacher does not turn away from the needs of the child, so we cannot have our state turn away from the needs of the child also. So, we are here, we will communicate anything that needs to go back and forth. We are committed to making this the best formula in the country, but I know it's not going to be easy. I know the timeline the legislature put you under was not, let's just say, really wasn't fair, because this is a very complex issue, but we need to get this right on behalf of all of the children of our state. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Lowry, deputy director for advocacy, research, and communications at the New York State Council of School Superintendents.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to testify today and for all your efforts to learn from our members and other stakeholders. Thank you also to the Gilderlin School District for hosting us today. I am Robert Lowry, deputy director of the New York State Council of School Superintendents. Almost from its enactment, I've referred to foundation aid as an underappreciated accomplishment in public policy. It generally provided the greatest aid per pupil to the neediest districts. It promised all districts greater predictability in aid, at least for a time, and it used factors with an explicit rationale. That made state funding decisions more transparent and decision-makers more accountable. But 17 years have passed. Some formula factors have never been updated, and others, problems have emerged, such as the use of free and reduced-price lunch data. We've also learned more about how school and life circumstances may affect learning for children. And finally, when the formula was enacted, there was no school district property tax cap to potentially impede districts from raising the formula's expected local contribution. Last fall, at the Educational Conference Board, a coalition of seven statewide public school groups released a paper recommending an approach for reviewing foundation aid. In brief, we noted that there are five core pieces of the formula, and for each, we identified steps that might be taken now and others which would require time and funding to complete. For example, there are alternative poverty measures that could be plugged in and modeled right now, while reconfiguring the regional cost index could require time and funding to research. We also stressed that any one change can have significant positive or negative impacts on a class of districts, and therefore, it might be necessary to defer structural changes until a package of reforms could be considered. Otherwise, some immediate choices might foreclose later better options that will require time to develop. For our audience, I'll note that our submitted testimony includes recommendations on many of the issues that other witnesses raised. It's available on our website, www.nyscosss.org. I'd like to use some of my time now to recommend principles to guide review. First, state aid formulas should treat similar districts similarly, so that inconsequential differences do not result in steep variances in funding. One way this could be addressed would be by creating more regions in the regional cost index, so that neighboring districts do not have implausibly different RCI factors. Second, our state aid formulas are complicated, because we are a complicated state, but understandability in aid and calculation should be favored. It supports both accountability in state funding decisions and predictability in local planning. Third, foundation aid should not be looked upon to solve every problem in education funding. Fourth, it's necessary to consider how ongoing economic and demographic trends may affect aid calculations. As one example, what happens in New York City powerfully affects state averages, and that can in turn affect aid for all districts. Fifth, because our state government is uniquely dependent on volatile revenue sources, school aid is contingent upon those same revenues. But as much as possible, formula should strive for predictability. One way in which this goal could be promoted would be by using rolling three-year averages and applying some aid factors. I'll highlight two of our recommendations. First, in addition to improving poverty measures and reevaluating the weight given to student need factors, we should also consider increasing the overall influence of student needs in the formula. Now, district ability to pay measures have a significantly greater impact on aid results than do student need factors. Second, one defect in the 2007 formula was the consolidation into foundation aid of what had been the largest source of special education funding. That choice reduced financial predictability. We do not see it as practical now to resurrect the old formula, but we will develop some alternative options. I'll end by speaking some about SAVE-HARMLESS. It is true that most of our districts have experienced enrollment declines, but virtually all are now doing more than ever before to help students and families with problems beyond academics. That's been the number-one theme when we asked superintendents what is most important for New Yorkers to understand about their public schools today. The actual cost of foundation aid, SAVE-HARMLESS, remains small, accounting for just 1% of total school aid and less than 0.3% of total state operating funds disbursements. But the impact of cuts can be catastrophic for affected districts. Offsetting the proposed cuts this year would have required local tax increases averaging 5.1%, on top of whatever was needed to meet cost increases. Action is needed on behalf of students attending districts, which have experienced steep enrollment declines, to ensure that they have access to opportunities we would want for our own children, but abrupt drastic cuts in aid for their schools can only diminish their prospects. We commend the Education Department's plans to promote regionalism with a focus on improving access to learning opportunities for all students. Thank you again for your time today. We look forward to continuing engagement as we all strive for a school finance system that can fulfill the promise of our state constitution, a system of free common schools, wherein all the children of this state may be educated, wherever they live and whatever their circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bryan Fessler, director of government relations for the New York State School Boards Association.
Good afternoon. My name is Bryan Fessler, and I thank you for the opportunity to offer commentary today on the foundation aid study on behalf of the New York State School Boards Association and the 678 member school boards we serve. As Bob mentioned, last year, while continuing to advocate for the state to begin a formal review of the foundation aid formula, NISBA joined with our partners in the Educational Conference Board to develop a detailed set of our own formula recommendations, reflective of what we had learned since the formula was enacted in 2007, as well as what we continued to hear from our respective memberships. Released in the fall of this past year, we organized our recommendations between shorter-term update priorities and longer-term study priorities. You've already heard about many of these items during the hearings, including census poverty data, free and reduced-price lunch counts, regional cost index, a new costing-out study, to name a few. These are issues that are addressed in detail in my submitted written testimony, so I instead wish to highlight a few conceptual or overarching challenges and questions that NISBA strongly encourages you to consider. First, we need to decide who and what we want a foundation aid formula to capture. Currently, the formula counts K-12 students, even though the state has justifiably placed a significant focus on the importance of pre-kindergarten. Also, a recent court decision requires school districts to provide educational services to certain special education students until the age of 22. Might it be appropriate to include such students in our basic operating aid formula? The student count used in the formula is also generally fixed once the school year begins, but we know that students can enroll mid-year. In some, in some of those cases, mid-year enrollment additions can have a tangible impact on a school district budget after state aid has been determined. We believe school districts should be supported in these situations, but prefer the reestablishment of a separate growth aid so as to not unnecessarily complicate foundation aid. Conversely, the state has occasionally used existing foundation aid to pay for new priorities rather than providing additional funding to support those new initiatives. These set-asides, which total hundreds of millions of dollars annually, reduce local control and give the false impression that additional investments are being made. School leadership with approval by voters must have the ability to determine where operating funds are most needed within their communities. Second is SAVE-HARMLESS. Within the context of foundation aid, we do need something better than a formula that is simply not being applied to nearly half the districts in the state. But the answer can't be to just slash their funding. We all know that the districts on SAVE-HARMLESS are overwhelmingly high in average need. We also know that many of those districts have experiencing, have experienced varying levels of enrollment decline. But if what might make sense in a vacuum or in a formula on paper ends up being so disconnected from the reality that our students, staff, and school board members are seeing each and every day, then we need a different answer. We need a system that better recognizes economies of scale and how districts are able to account for enrollment changes and how they're not. And third, which we saw unartfully grappled with this past year is inflation. While imperfect, including inflation in an operating aid formula acknowledges the broad cost pressures that districts face, but if we're including it, we can't only include it when inflation is low and stable. A formula that dismisses inflation when it's challenging will tie districts' hands in a way that creates structural and harmful imbalances. At the same time, much of what we hear about foundation aid from school board members is related to other parts of the general school funding equation, and we believe it's prudent for your work to consider the interplay of these other factors. First is the property tax cap. Under current law, the foundation aid formula and the tax cap do not recognize the existence of each other. This general concept is true for both fiscally independent districts, who are directly subject to the tax cap, but also for fiscally dependent districts who rely on their municipalities for local funding. This is unsound policy, as it will limit the ability of a district to reach the expected local contribution portion of the formula, while the district... local contribution portion of the formula, while the disconnect also ignores the fact that districts must lean more on property taxes when foundation aid is insufficient. The other factor is the issue of fund balances and reserves. Reserves are essentially restricted savings accounts, which allow for districts to plan for expenses that are uneconomical to pay for in a single year. The capital reserve for school building construction is a common example, whereas fund balance is the small positive budget margin that school districts can end a budget year with. The fund balance is a natural result of annual budgeting, and it's also a critical tool to address the unpredictable nature of public budgets. The recent rhetoric around foundation aid and fund balance is not only unfair to districts, but it's counterproductive, as threats to state aid push districts to rely on the few tools they have in order to ensure their students continue to receive the programs and services they require and deserve. For NISBA, our advocacy when it comes to foundation aid, and in fact, all state funding for schools, is centered around five principles: adequacy, equity, flexibility, predictability, and clarity. We're hopeful and optimistic that the Rockefeller Institute's recommendations will address all five of these equally important ideals, and we stand ready to support you and state policymakers in that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Chesniky, Executive Director of the Association of School Business Officials of New York.
I'm Brian Chesniky, Executive Director of the Association of School Business Officials of New York. Prior to my current role, I've also had many years of experience in the foundation aid formula, having worked on the team at the Division of Budget that contributed to its creation in 2007, and as the State Education Department's Director of Education Finance, overseeing its implementation between 2014 and 2020. Thank you all for your invitations to representatives from ASBO to these hearings. I'd like to just quickly summarize the topics that my colleagues have brought forward and provide additional insights that you may not have heard to date. We will submit written comments with more details ahead of the deadline. In the previous hearings, our members have spoken to you about the importance of predictability and updating data on a more regular basis, the challenges of statewide data solutions where there are wide regional variations, and the importance of a fixed base of financial support for smallest districts in the state. I also echo the comments you've heard at other hearings and today about the appropriate funding mechanisms for special education and whether that should continue to be included in the foundation aid formula or funded separately. Today, I'd like you to think more globally about what the state is trying to accomplish with the foundation aid formula. First, I have to quote Regent Jim Talan, may he rest in peace, that the formula is ultimately composed of four moving parts. All other complexity aside, it is conceptually a simple and powerful measurement of school district financial capacity. There's a concept for which I can't claim credit about the tension in the formula between it being comprehensive and comprehensible. The state has and should continue to enact a formula that is comprehensive, given the economic and geographic diversity in New York. A truly comprehensive formula may come at the expense of comprehensibility, but I think that trade-off, though acceptable, can be tempered through smart policymaking. There's been a lot of testimony about the political nature of the formula, and though I wish I could fully agree with the sentiment, I have spent too much time in the room where it happens to think that completely removing political considerations from the formula is possible. But if we dive deeper into the issue, I don't believe that the cause of the frustration with political decisions is that they're political. It's because they often fail what I call the story test. Complicated politically-driven calculations can still be explainable to a layperson in a way that makes them say, "Oh, I see why they did that." All too often, our school aid formulas, especially foundation aid, have lacked that clarity. Separately, though related, you've heard a lot about the need for transparency in the formula. I would posit that for three of the last four years, the final results of the formula in each state budget were incredibly transparent because the formula had been left untouched. But the volatility and detachment from local school district reality we've seen over that same time period leaves people asking for more transparency, which suggests a problem. Not a problem with the formula's complexity, but with its design. Enter the story test. I don't believe that we have to lose a more comprehensive and effective formula for the sake of making it easier to understand, but the complicated parts of the formula should be able to be translated into a logical and understandable narrative. Here's something that passes the story test. Students in poverty require more resources for education, so we add a .65 weighting per identified student to the per pupil amounts to account for it. Here's something that doesn't pass the test, in my view. Schools in rural areas have unique cost challenges, so we add a calculated student weighting equal to the lesser of 25 minus the number of students per square mile divided by 50.9. I've worked on this formula for 17 years, and I still can't come up with a good one-liner that explains that. Accounting for added costs associated with small rural districts should be part of this calculation, but it should be done in a way that is intuitive. This isn't to say that complexity of addressing this and other issues isn't important, but we should be smarter about how it's achieved. There are many other examples where the story test can highlight areas where the formula is failing to address a stated concern. As you've heard, the formula is now disconnected from the reality of local revenue, where it assumes simple increases in property or income wealth in a district means that district can raise more local revenue on its own. But since the tax cap was enacted in 2011, this is simply no longer true. The story the formula is trying to tell is that as a district's property values increase, so they can issue more tax levy. But the amount of taxable property in a district no longer has a meaningful impact on the additional level of tax levy that the district can issue. The story test extends to changes in enrollment. The formula reacts the moment a district loses a student, decreasing its aid for two reasons: one, because the student is no longer there; and two, because on paper, the district should now be able to spend more money per pupil out of its local property revenue. But apply that concept to a real situation, and it's not true. I've examined two small neighboring districts in the state and assumed that if we moved one student per grade from a K-8 district to a neighboring K-12 district, the story test would tell us functionally nothing has changed in either district. But the formula calculates that one district can now spend 3.5% more locally and the other 3.5% less. There are inherent realities and demographic shifts that go beyond the simplistic consideration of students and their cost moving between districts, which the formula is currently ignoring. If we look at operating aids and formulas in other states, we do see elements where they favor comprehensiveness over comprehensibility. I think they demonstrate a lesson that we can learn to make the theoretical goals embedded in the formula match reality. A more complicated formula doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be less comprehensible. How understandable it is rests on whether it passes the story test. I've talked a lot today about transparency and comprehensibility. I would note in closing that there is more public transparency in school funding than in any other level of government. The fact that it remains a question for many isn't because of a lack of information, it's because of an overabundance of information that is not thoughtfully and effectively constructed, and I hope that a future foundation aid formula can close that gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Jennifer Pyle, Executive Director of the Conference of Big Five School Districts.
Thank you for inviting us to speak today. Frankly, I think my colleagues have said it all, but I'm still going to go through our remarks, and clearly, the Big Five have some significant concerns with regard to the system, the process, and what's in place right now. So, as Anita noted, I serve as the Executive Director of the Conference of Big Five School Districts. We represent Buffalo, New York City, Rochester, Syracuse, Yonkers, Albany, Mount Vernon, and Utica. So yes, we have eight, but we're the Big Five, a little confusing to some. Collectively, we enroll 43% of the state's public school students. Our school districts faced significant challenges prior to the pandemic, and they've only been exacerbated. It's imperative that the state commit to a revised foundation aid formula that's transparent, predictable, and distributes funding in an equitable manner reflective of unique student needs. The campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit concluded that the school aid formula was not succeeding in delivering funding in a fair and equitable manner. As cited in the decision, there are measurable inputs that must be considered when defining a sound basic education. The formula must be updated to ensure that it truly reflects the costs of educating all students and recognizes unique student needs. Furthermore, increases must keep pace with expenses related to providing additional services as well as inflation. Each of the Big Five's member districts have experienced enrollment shifts in recent years that can be attributed to pupils who are newly arrived to the United States, including large numbers of refugee pupils. Many of these students speak little or no English and are in need of expanded services and interventions. In fact, 67% of all English language learners are educated in the Big Five. Furthermore, 50% of the state's special education students are educated in our school districts. In addition, the percentages of pupils living in poverty in the Big Five are staggering, as are the rates of student mobility and homelessness. The utilization of the free and reduced-price lunch measure as a measure of poverty under foundation aid must be revisited. Given the establishment of community eligibility whereby all students are eligible for free lunch, there's little incentive for parents to fill out the forms, and as a result, our furlough percentages have been decreasing and are inaccurate, despite what I would call extraordinary efforts to encourage parents to complete the forms. The current foundation aid formula targets state aid to high-need school districts via the calculation of the pupil needs index. The community poverty data embedded is again captured from the 2000 census. It's extremely outdated and fails to accurately account for shifts in population. The state must construct a new formula that's not only reflective of current community demographics, but most importantly, one that will continue to utilize inputs that are dynamic in nature and adjust to our ever-changing population shifts. Each of the Big Five, as I'm sure you're well aware, are heavily reliant on state funds. The large-city school districts have no ability to raise local revenues given their fiscal dependency, and our districts Albany, Mount Vernon, and Utica are of course limited by the tax cap imposed upon them. Furthermore, we have no expectation that any of those respective cities will have the capacity to significantly increase their local share for education in the foreseeable future. As has been noted numerous times, the regional cost index must be reevaluated to ensure that it accurately and adequately reflects variations in the cost of delivering services in different parts of the state. The state must also commit to a sizable foundation aid increase coupled with a formula that's transparent and affords school districts predictability. This is imperative to ensure that school districts have stability and the ability to plan for the future. Lastly, flexibility in funding is critical. Local funding decisions are best managed at a local level by school leaders who understand the unique needs of the pupils they serve. We're pleased that the Rockefeller Institute recognizes that a complete overhaul will require additional time and resources. We urge you to use the feedback received to make adjustments in '25, '26 that will move us closer to a more equitable and adequate funding system, and for the state to commit to a complete overhaul going forward. The state should also take action to conduct a new cost study to determine the per pupil foundation aid amount, as much has changed since its inception. In closing, I want to thank you again for this opportunity and stress the urgency of creating a formula that fosters equity and adequacy. Every student deserves the resources necessary to guarantee them a chance to succeed, and New York State's funding system must be modified to ensure that it accounts for people needs and is based on the premise of equitable distribution of resources. We stand ready to assist you, and again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Roger Catania, Member of the New York State Board of Regents.
Good afternoon, and thank you for providing me with this opportunity to provide comments in support of this critically important effort. My name is Roger Catania. I represent the Fourth Judicial District on the New York State Board of Regents, and I'm also co-chair of the State Aid Subcommittee. The Fourth District is a large and mostly rural area which covers 11 counties, starting about five miles north of here, all the way to the Canadian border. It includes approximately 100 school districts. So my recommendations include two main areas relevant to this forum. First, like many people have already mentioned, modernizing and updating the formula, which would truly represent the needs of all districts, and that includes things like updating the census poverty counts, replacing free reduced-price lunch with economically disadvantaged numbers, eliminating the income wealth index floor of .65, and updating high-need district designations regularly. But second, I would like to talk about how the formula needs to consider the unique nature of small and rural districts like many in my region. These include places like Long Lake with 65 students K-12, that's 43% economically disadvantaged, Clifton-Fine, 238 students K-12 with 71% economically disadvantaged, or Boquette Valley, 368 students with 58% economically disadvantaged, a recently consolidated district, and many more like them. Rural schools are a part of the fabric of upstate New York. These are areas of great beauty, vast distances, extreme weather, and supportive local communities. Many have struggling local economies. Rural poverty is widespread. For example, 60% of the students in Franklin County are considered economically disadvantaged. Some students ride a bus for more than an hour one way, and rural schools are not all alike, with some located just on the fringe of more populated areas, while others reflect extreme geographic isolation. Some are what I would call property-rich and income-poor districts. Year-round residents there are generally working families, but these districts rely heavily on vacation property taxes, which is a revenue stream that doesn't keep pace with costs due to the tax cap, as has already been mentioned. For example, of Long Lake's $4.9 million annual budget, only 10% comes from state aid, while 71% comes from property taxes, and then they cover the rest with remaining fund balance. What's going to happen when that's all spent? Most of these districts are also what I would call low-capacity, high-mandate districts, which means they must meet every legal and regulatory mandate regardless of size, despite far less capacity to do so than in larger districts. Every new law and regulation typically requires districts to expend time and resources without funding to cover these expenses. This is the case at a district like Hammond Central School District, only a few miles from the Canadian border in St. Lawrence County, with 231 students, including 64% who are economically disadvantaged. Hammond has two administrators and two-and-a-half administrative assistants to run the entire district's day-to-day operations, as well as handle all of the requirements, including everything from attendance to tax collection, to chief information officer, data reporting, safety plans, workplace violence prevention programs, financial oversight, and many, many more. Every law and rule adds to that burden, and almost all of our small rural districts are community centers of critical importance. In many cases, the school district is the only source of support for children, families, and the entire community. They have to respond to social, emotional, nutritional, physical, recreational, and mental health needs because few other options are available. These responsibilities also fall most heavily on the shoulders of our small and remote districts. There are minimum costs to running a district of any size: at least one teacher at every grade, special ed services, a nurse, counseling, psychology, and many, many more. Economies of scale are difficult to achieve. Consolidation attempts often fall flat due to immense distances or the fear of losing community identity. Students in these supportive schools often graduate at a high rate. It's a positive. However, only a few can take advanced courses like AP or IB, or specialized courses in art, music, computing, or engineering. With few other options, the districts do rely heavily on high-quality BOSI CTE programs, programs that are also underfunded due to the $30,000 reimbursement cap on instructor salaries. A recent national study by the Educational Opportunity Project at Stanford University describes rural school outcomes as having a high floor but a low ceiling, suggesting that their supportive nature and heterogeneous grouping help more students achieve at a minimum level. But they also note that high achievement is limited, and that rural students attend and graduate college at a lower rate than their non-rural peers due to numerous barriers, including finances, few role models, geographic isolation from higher education institutions, limited access to more advanced high school programs, and community expectations. A revised foundation aid formula might better reflect the real costs of providing meaningful educational opportunities in a small rural school district by updating the successful school district's model, adjusting the sparsity factor, reconsidering the combined wealth ratio, and restructuring BOSI's funding. Much has been said about declining enrollment and hold-harmless funding, with speculations about overly generous foundation aid amounts being distributed to small and rural districts. These characterizations just don't reflect the reality of the districts I represent. We all want the formula to reflect the real costs of educating children today, regardless of their setting. Thank you for all of your efforts on this important work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amadi Masaiya Dahim, President of the New York State PTA. Imani Masia-Dahim, president of the New York State PTA.
Good afternoon. Our testimony segues perfectly on Mr. Catania's. My name is Imani Masia-Dahim, and I am honored to serve as president of New York State PTA. I am a proud member of the Central Hudson Region, resident of Suffolk, New York, and I'm joined today by my colleagues Kim Blaseyak and Jen Calazo from Northeastern Region and Gilderland as well, where we are today. Our Northeastern Region encompasses three of the counties in this area. Jointly, New York State PTA is honored to represent our 225,000 members, as the second-largest education stakeholder group in New York State, and the parents and families of our 2.6 million public schoolchildren. It is our mission to make every child's potential a reality and support every child with one voice. We appreciate the opportunity to reflect on the future of foundation aid and how changes can impact and, most importantly, benefit and support children and families statewide. In our previous testimonies, we've discussed a number of critical funding issues facing our children, educators, and schools, including special education support, student mental health, Save Harmless, the needs of our rural and urban schools, and Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations, including all-student indexes, re-establishing growth aid, chronic absenteeism, and making pre-kindergarten funding sustainable. Today, in our final testimony, we will focus on the demands of what a global workforce looks like and how that may be supported with investments in community, schools, career and technical education, and advanced coursework. Career and technical education programs play a crucial role in preparing students for an in-demand careers and in reimagining graduation pathways for education. The New York State Education Department Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation recommended ensuring access to career and technical education, including internships and work-based learning opportunities for all students across the New York State. However, the demand for CTE programs far exceeds the availability of programming. For example, student enrollment in New York State CTE programs is topping out at 270,083, but there are just 6,740 CTE instructors to meet that need. Currently, BOSI serves an astounding 50,697 students, and according to Advanced CTE, a national nonprofit that represents state leaders of career technical education, high school students in New York State who take CTE courses boast a 92% graduation rate, and 98% of them go on to pursue post-secondary education. Seventy-nine new CTE programs have been developed over the past three years through partnerships and guidance from local businesses. But alarmingly, the current aid formula for BOSI CTE programs has not changed since 1990. This prevents school districts from receiving much-needed revenue to expand access to meet student needs. Similarly, the special services aid for Big Five school districts and its per-pupil funding can -- cap, sorry -- lag far behind what is needed to grow CTE programming. These inadequate reimbursement rates constrain CTE programs' current-capacity ability to grow. The continued shortage of skilled workers will only worsen if critical investments in CTE and other workforce development programs are not made. Furthermore, we also believe it is critical that state funding includes separate support that encourages schools to increase access to rigorous college-level coursework, such as early college-high-school PTEC programming, advanced placement classes, and international baccalaureate coursework. Courses that are proven to both increase a student's college readiness and can save families thousands of dollars by earning them time-saving college credits. While this coursework is becoming increasingly more available to low-income students, as a state, we have a long way to go. Annually, there is little conversation of funding these items in the state budget, and we continue to seek increases in all of these essential programs as they lead to greater graduation rates and success in college and career. We also continue to seek new and expanded funding for community schools, as they are an effective strategy for students and families' success, and often address the health, social, and socio-emotional needs of students and their families. Community schools truly provide valuable resources and support for students and families, with wraparound services that help keep children and families healthy, communities safe, and students supported. Out of more than 700 school districts in New York State, only 300, less than 300, utilize a community-school-model approach of learning and support. We know the community-school model is a proven model of success. Sadly, while the state has often included foundation aid set-asides for community schools or competitive state grant funding for schools, there has not been sustained, adequate, or equitable funding for this proven model of student success, support, and learning. In conclusion, every parent and family has a dream for their children. It is our job to be dream-makers, ensuring every child, no matter their zip code, their ethnicity, their ability--
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you for your work.
Stephen Marius, director of State Studies, Citizens Budget Commission.
Hello. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to offer comments. I'm Stephen Marcus, a research associate for the Citizens Budget Commission, a nonpartisan, nonprofit think-tank, and watchdog dedicated to constructive change in the finances, services, and policies of New York City and New York State government. My comments this afternoon build on CBC's prior testimony and years of research. In our initial comment and accompanying report published last month, we identified basic shortcomings in existing school aid formulas and made seven recommendations. Overall, CBC encourages the institute, and subsequently state lawmakers, to consider the foundation aid formula in the context of all school aid funding sources available to localities, and to ensure that the state's spending is targeted based on need. Currently, arbitrary floors and ceilings, inadequate data inputs, and a failure to properly account for the local fiscal capacity result in poor targeting of school aid. Today, I would like to further expand on these points with two priorities. One, to specify three improvements to formulas that would better account for locality's circumstances and actions; and two, to support our recommendation to allocate more school aid based on need with additional analysis. In addition to our prior recommendations to eliminate the hold harmless provision and arbitrary floors and ceilings in the formulas, CBC recommends three improvements to the formulas for foundation aid and other expense-based aid to better account for local circumstances and actions. First, formulas should more accurately estimate a district's capacity and willingness to raise revenue, and should use the actual local contribution as the expected minimum local contribution when it exceeds the estimate. Often, a district contributes more than the formula determines it can or should, with most districts doing so in the previous school year. In fact, 152 districts contributed enough local revenue to provide a sound basic education before receiving any state aid. Second, calculations of local fiscal capacity should account for locality's other spending obligations, including state mandates such as Medicaid and others driven by economic or social factors such as poverty or unhoused residents, by adjusting the expected local contribution. The Medicaid local share, for example, shifts $8 billion in costs of the state-run Medicaid program to counties and therefore local taxpayers, so their school aid obligation should account for that. Third, indices of need and regional costs should be updated regularly and be sufficiently granular to capture variation. For example, the regional cost index is dated and geographically broad. It may not capture differences between urban, suburban, and rural areas within the same region. And the pupil needs index relies on outdated measures of poverty and imprecise measures of the qualification for free and reduced-price lunch and English-language learner student enrollment. It does not sufficiently account for other factors that could increase student need and therefore district costs, such as the number of residents in transitional housing, special education needs, or the negative impact of concentrated poverty. Additional analyses build on our prior recommendations to target expense-based aid and the school tax relief program funds based on district need by describing inadequacies in expense-based aids and illustrating the impact of distributing those aids proportional to current foundation aid allocations. Building and transportation aid are the two largest expense-based aid categories, together totaling nearly $6 billion. These figures attempt to account for local capacity and regional cost variances, among other factors. However, as previously described, the local capacity formulas are limited, and floors and ceilings distort the allocation of these aids. School districts' building and transportation costs should be explored further to identify reforms that would incentivize efficiency of spending and to improve the funding distribution to better reflect local needs and resources. The state will allocate $447 million in library, textbook, software, and high-tax aids in the 2024-25 school year without accounting for local wealth at all. Library, textbook, and software aids provide schools with a fixed dollar-per-student allocation regardless of student need or local resources, while high-tax aid is allocated based on prior district funding levels and has been frozen since 2014. It no longer serves its original purpose of incentivizing districts to raise more local revenue. If these aids were distributed proportional to foundation aid, the share flowing to districts in the four lowest wealth deciles, which includes New York City, would increase from 45% to 75%. Finally, the STAR program, which is just school aid by another name, shifts over $3 billion of education funding from locally raised property tax revenue to the state each year, and STAR's design means that more money flows to wealthier districts. Last year, districts in the bottom-three wealth deciles received around $500 million from STAR, while the top-three wealth deciles received $942 million. If STAR funding were reallocated proportional to foundation aid, aid to the bottom-three deciles would double, while funding flowing to the top-three wealth deciles would be cut by 2/3, substantially redistributing these funds. On a per-student basis, districts in the lowest wealth decile would receive, on average, around $1,700 more per student than they currently receive from STAR, while districts in the top decile would decrease by around $1,200 per pupil. This section included a great deal of data points, so allow me to put it more simply. If expense-based aids in STAR were distributed proportional to foundation aid, they would be better targeted based on student need and local wealth. Thank you again for the opportunity to offer comment today, and thank you to the Rockefeller Institute's staff and experts on completing the public hearing portion of your work, and we look forward to reading the final report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Davy, district superintendent of Champlain Valley Educational Services.
President Magna, esteemed representatives of the Rockefeller Institute of Government. My name is Dr. Mark Davy, and I am honored to present my testimony as district superintendent on behalf of Champlain Valley Educational Services BOSI's, officially known as Clinton Essex Warren-Washington BOSI's, one of 37 in the state, serving 16 component districts, 13,500 students in the North Country. In addition to my role as district superintendent, I have the privilege of serving as the vice-chair of the Rural Schools Association Board of Directors. My 40-year career in education spans urban, suburban, and rural districts across the state. Thirty-three years in administration, 16 years as superintendent, and 12 years as district superintendent in the North Country, my home region. Thank you for the opportunity to provide insights and recommendations today. Rural school districts, particularly geographically-isolated ones like ours, face pressing challenges like sparsity, limited access to services, and allocation of resources. In addition, availability and accessing healthcare, often at increased costs, harsher weather increasing our operating costs, building operation, transportation, workforce shortages, and increased cost and availability of mental health resources. I have five key recommendations I'm sharing today. First, utilization of updated and accurate data to support the base per-pupil formula calculation. The efficacy of the foundation formula is critically undermined currently by its reliance on outdated data. Demographic shifts, including the increased numbers of students with disabilities, English-language learners, homeless students, foster students, migrant students, and students in poverty, please update the formula to reflect the increased costs of supporting and meeting these students' needs. Second, poverty measures update. Currently, we utilize the free-and-reduced lunch, FERPA, FERPA, data as a measure of poverty. It's outdated and doesn't truly reflect the economic hardship by our families. Many of our districts now use CEP. It's the Community Eligibility Provision for school meals, so they don't need to fill out their FERPA data. Please consider utilizing other data measures such as ALIS's United, the United Ways ALIS data, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed Data, which provides a better measure of comprehensive understanding of the economic hardships faced by our families. Third, revising the combined wealth ratio, the CWR. The CWR often misrepresents the actual economic capacity of districts, particularly with high property values but low resident wealth. This discrepancy is increasingly prevalent in rural areas throughout the state, especially with natural beauty and lake property. It has driven up property values. It's often associated with second homes of individuals who live outside the region. This artificially inflates the numbers for the district and exacerbates the disparity between local resident wealth and assessed property values. Currently, the factor is a 50-50% formula. Please consider adjusting that and allowing flexibility such as 70-30 or 30-70, depending on the districts and to make it more equitable. Fourth, support regionalization. Regionalization prevents a vital opportunity for rural districts to optimize resources, shared services, and collaborate on educational initiatives. We urge you to increase the incentivization for shared services, providing increased educational opportunities throughout rural New York State and all schools across the entire state. Number five, formula adjustment phase-in timeline and implementation consideration. Given the extensive recalibration that we believe is required and needed, we recommend considering an implementation timeline that allows school districts across the state to plan and adjust for the economic impact. Maintaining hold harmless for districts, if not providing a well-planned phase-in, is essential, especially to allow predictability. For example, a phase-in implementation timeline could include a one-to-three-year initial phase, followed by a second three-to-five, the three-to-five-year phase, and finally, a five-to-10-year third phase for long-term implementation that provides systemic reform. The timeline allows districts to partner with the New York State Education Department and the state to implement the Blue Ribbon Commission and the graduation measures to include and ensure student success. Also, please include, integrate, please include educational research, best practices, and national examples. Please, please examine also other states who have undertaken this significant reform so that we have a successful long-term reliability and validity. In conclusion, a revised foundation formula that is more equitable, responsive, and effective in addressing the diverse needs of New York State. All New York State students must have access to a comprehensive, high-quality education plan with breadth and depth, regardless of their zip code, to ensure their constitutionally guaranteed path to graduation helps support students to be successful graduates and contributing citizens in the future. Help them fulfill our state's model, Excelsior, meaning ever upward. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Wiles, superintendent of the Gilderland Central School District.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marie Wiles. I'm the superintendent of the Gilderland Central School District. Let me extend again a warm welcome to our school community here. We're happy to have you here. I want to thank you for your time and for all the work you're doing to improve the system by which our schools are funded. And I also want to add, I'm here today speaking on behalf of all 24 school districts in the Capital Region BOSI's. Public schools in New York are at a pivotal moment. We're tasked with preparing students for a future where the only certainty is change. Our goal can no longer be the simple one of preparing students for academic success. Our goal can no longer be the simple one of preparing students for academic success. We need to prepare students to be resilient problem solvers, creative thinkers, adept consumers of an incredible amount of information, and meaningful, productive contributors to their communities. It's crucial that the state aid system that supports all public schools work to ensure that no child, whether in large urban centers or our smallest rural districts, is left behind. My colleagues and I in the Capital Region are committed to principles of equity and sustainability. We strive to make smart investments and to foster innovations that will meet the diverse needs of the 80,000-plus students that we collectively serve. Even though we're 24 unique communities, some urban, some rural, some suburban, we pride ourselves on working together as a region to do great things for our students. But we need your help to recalibrate the state aid formula so that it reflects today's realities. We need to move beyond outdated metrics and move to a system that adequately accounts for the actual fiscal capacity and specific educational demands of our school communities here in the Capital Region and in every region of New York State. A revised funding formula must address the urgent needs of our diverse student body, including English-language learners and students with disabilities, by accommodating the true costs of specialized services and early interventions. In addition, our understanding of what it means to provide a comprehensive education is very different from what it was when the current formula was adopted. A comprehensive education now must include social-emotional learning, mental health services, along with updated and rigorous academic and graduation requirements. All too often, the funding for crucial services such as these is dependent on grants or other inconsistent sources of funding that do not reach all school districts equally or equitably. Pre-kindergarten is the prime example. Few will argue with the value of early education, but because pre-K is funded through a myriad of grants, there is tremendous inequity among districts, and many are unable to provide a full pre-K-12 continuum of educational opportunities for students. As the cornerstone of funding for all of our schools in the state, the foundation formula must be updated and revised to reflect the current educational needs of our children and the economic realities of our communities. A critical component of our educational continuum should also include the continued integration of workforce development and college programs directly into high schools. We must prepare students academically and for meaningful careers in the real world. Any changes to our funding structures should help students adapt to an evolving educational landscape. We need to expand students' opportunities for diverse college and career-building programs like internships, early college high school, pathways in technology, or P-Tech, along with a wide range of college courses offered right in high schools. Additionally, we recommend emphasizing workforce development opportunities that align educational programs directly with labor market needs. Prioritizing these essential programs is crucial to enhancing student success and addressing global economic challenges. In Gilderland, we are hard at work preparing our students to be future-ready. We need an updated foundation aid formula that will support this work not just for today, but for future generations. We need a formula that addresses today's challenges and anticipates future needs. Let's empower our schools to provide each and every student with the opportunities they deserve to succeed in the 21st century. Thank you so much for your attention and commitment to ensuring a bright future for all New Yorkers. We're really counting on you. Thank you for your time today, and again, so glad to have you here in Gilderland. Thank you.
Thank you. David Blanchard, Superintendent of the Schuahery Central School District.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Blanchard. I'm the Superintendent for the Schuahery Central School District, and much like Marie, I'm representing the 24 United in the Capital District with more of a focus on our small rural schools. Thank you for your time in welcoming us here to this hearing. Today, I just want to emphasize the critical need for predictable and flexible school funding for our districts. In a world where educational requirements and societal challenges evolve rapidly, our schools must have stable and reliable financial support to effectively meet the growing needs that you're hearing today through much of the testimony. This is true of today's needs, but it's also true for our students in the years ahead. Predictable funding ensures that schools can maintain and enhance essential programs for all students without risk of sudden budget cuts or unexpected shortfalls or even large tax increases. It allows school leaders to make long-term investments in a continuum of quality educational programs, investments in facilities, advanced technology, specialized programs, and virtual learning options, and more, including programs to focus on college preparation and workforce needs. It allows districts to provide crucial staff training that might otherwise be deferred due to fiscal uncertainty. In reviewing the foundation aid formula, please consider the property tax cap was introduced after the formula was originally established. While the formula must be updated to accurately reflect local economic conditions and wealth, it must also be updated to accurately reflect the limitations imposed by the tax cap and what districts can be expected to reasonably take in as local revenue under the cap. Too often, our districts are faced with impossible choices, balancing the needs of students against the ability of taxpayers to support our budgets. These choices are made even harder when state funding sources are inconsistent or unpredictable. As the state looks to update and modernize its foundation aid formula, consideration must be given to how this funding can be flexible enough to adapt to the changing and often immediate needs of districts. From supporting migrant and homeless students to students with significant disabilities, the ability of districts to adequately address the needs of students and their families should not rest on an outdated funding model. Moreover, predictable funding supports sustained improvements in student outcomes. Schools can implement and refine innovative teaching methods, provide consistent support services, and ensure that every child, regardless of background, has access to the resources they need to succeed. This stability is especially vital in most vulnerable districts where fluctuations in funding can widen achievement gaps and hinder progress. To achieve this predictability, we must advocate for a funding formula that considers the unique needs of all communities, urban, suburban, and rural, and provides a mechanism for regular and systematic updates. This includes accounting for the changes in enrollment, regional cost efficiencies, and diverse needs of our student population. Furthermore, to truly support our students, we should consider implementation of transitional aid mechanisms to help districts adapt to our enrollment changes without compromising the quality of education within the communities throughout New York. In conclusion, establishing a predictable funding model isn't just about numbers, it's about providing every student with a stable learning environment where they can thrive. It's about making a commitment to the future of our children and the overall health of our education system. Let's work together to ensure that our schools have the reliable funding they need to plan effectively and deliver the promise of a quality education for every student. Thank you for your commitment to making our schools better, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Monica Leclair, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Antioch Central School District.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Monica Leclair, and I am the Assistant Superintendent for Business at the Antioch Central School District. We are an almost 300-square-mile district with approximately 1,025 students, located in the heart of the Catskill Mountains, about two hours north of New York City. We are a rural district, and we have less than five students per square mile. We are also the largest employer in our area. I don't envy the job that you've been tasked with. New York State is made up of over 700 schools, and each carries its own unique climate and culture. Everyone thinks their district is special, and they're right. I know my district is special, as are the students we teach, the staff we employ, and they all deserve the best. So this is the story of my district. Antioch is one of the districts that the current foundation aid formula has deemed overfunded. We have been in the hold harmless situation for many years. Of the slightly more than $7 million that we currently receive in foundation aid, the formula as it's run says we're $6 million overfunded. Antioch has been fortunate, but we do not take our fortune for granted. Our number-one taxpayer is New York City; our number-two taxpayer is New York State. But we have also struggled with declining enrollment, as our district is a favorite among second homeowners and also Airbnbs. We're considered wealthy because we have large property wealth. However, we are not without our challenges. Our declining enrollment has not equated to declining costs. Because we are rural, our transportation costs represent a much larger part of our budget than most districts. Our buses drive over 950,000 miles annually, and because we're considered wealthy, we are only eligible for 8% transportation aid. Our special ed population ranges from 18% to 20%, yet we receive the minimum amount of excess cost aid. In addition, our free and reduced lunch percentage is almost 40%. So you can see while the district property wealth, our income wealth, is not proportionally the same, and we have a large number of students that struggle and need extra support. We are grateful that we have been able to provide that support to them. Antioch does not have an overabundance of unappropriated fund balance. Since its inception, the district has not gone over the tax levy limit, and there were years that Antioch was able to put out a tax levy increase of 0%. We are a district, we are not a district that keeps its extra money; we are a district that would give it back to the community when we could, but also created expended monies from a capital reserve to fund projects that allowed us not to take on debt, thereby also keeping our taxes lower. I do believe that changes to the foundation aid formula need to be made. The foundation formula is written, is incredibly complex. I never did understand, and I've been doing this for 20 years. The components are outdated. I believe that the formula needs to properly take various needs into account, many of which were previously mentioned. If, once the formula is changed, Antioch is still deemed overfunded, then I'm asking that any changes made to districts that see a reduction be made gradually and in a manner that is predictable for schools over the course of many years. By instituting a more gradual reduction with a limit to the amount of a reduction of each year, it would allow districts to more effectively plan with our boards of education, our school leaders, and our community in order to mitigate any adverse effects the loss of foundation aid may bring. Changes in school takes time. What was given to us over many years should not be taken away in a few. In addition, the state should look at the tax levy limit so that any foundation aid loss could maybe be included in the tax levy limit without requiring a supermajority by the voters. This is another way to give the community say in the future of their district. The $6 million that the formula currently says we are overfunded by represents 10% of our budget. With the current tax levy limit in place, we could not make up that amount of loss. Even the initial $3 million reduction that was presented by the governor's budget in January would have been detrimental to our district and would have led to the loss of many of our staff with major disruptions to our student's success. It is my hope that New York State can work with districts so that all students have access to the best and are given everything they need to be successful. Thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. That was the last speaker, and that concludes our afternoon portion. We're going to ask that folks leave the auditorium. We will reopen the doors at 5 o'clock so that tonight's public comment will begin at 5:30. We're asking folks to leave so that we can give our staff a break. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for coming. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the fifth and final public hearing on the New York State Foundation Aid Formula. My name is Anita Murphy. I previously served as the District Superintendent at Capital Region BOCES. I was a superintendent before that and worked in the large cities for a good portion of my career. I am joined today by the President of the Rockefeller Institute, Robert Magna; to my immediate left, Brian Backstrom, Director of Education Policy Studies for the Rockefeller Institute; Dr. Lisa Partial. Lisa is a distinguished professor of political science at Damon University, and she's a Rockefeller Institute Fellow; and Dr. Lucy Sorensen, Associate Professor of Public Administration and Policy at the University of Albany. As a reminder, the hearing is currently being livestreamed, and a recording of the meeting will be online shortly after tonight. Tonight's hearing concludes. That will be on the Rockefeller Institute website if anyone is interested. Since some audience members may be recognizable in the footage by remaining in the audience, you are giving your consent to the possibility of being in the background of some of today's recordings. Just a few other housekeeping notes. Today, we have an ASL interpreter with us who is sitting on the left side of the stage, and although we don't have simultaneous interpretation services onsite today, a transcript of the meeting will be translated into multiple languages and posted on the Rockefeller Institute website. If you have any questions about the foundation aid study or about this hearing, or if you need assistance with anything, please talk to any of our event staff members that are outside and in the back of the room, and they're always happy to help. And on behalf of the Rockefeller Institute, we'd like to extend a sincere thanks to the Gilderland Public School District, who welcomed us here today, and to the Superintendent Marie Wiles. Thank you all, thank them all for being incredibly gracious hosts. We'd also like to thank everybody who registered to speak tonight and the fact that you've taken time out of your busy schedules to be here. So, a little background. The purpose of the hearings is to hear the voices of the New York State community on the foundation aid formula for state education funding. New York State's enacted 2425 budget, called for the Rockefeller Institute to conduct a study to assess the state's foundation aid formula and discuss potential modifications to how that formula works. And as a part of that study, researchers are collecting feedback from the public, both verbal testimony and written testimony through the online mechanism to do that. Any of you who would like to submit written testimony or have your testimony and would like to submit it afterwards, the website is posted right up there, rockinstitute.org/FA. Feedback from both the, both part of the hearings this afternoon, where people gave oral testimony, and this evening, will be incorporated into the study and used to inform the report and discussions on policy options. Just one quick note. The budget called for Rockefeller to look at the foundation aid formula. This is not about education policy, it is about the formula itself. I would now like to turn it over to Bob Magna, President of the Rockefeller Institute. Bob?
Hi, thanks, Anita. I would like to welcome everyone. Anita always does a great job of summarizing where we are. I would just point out that this is our final public hearing, but you can still submit written submissions to us by September 6th, and I'm going to guess that if it came on September 7th, we'd still include it. This is the timeline that we've been working under, which has been a very strict timeline and a very short one. So with, as Anita said, with the passage of the budget, the study was, the legislature and the governor asked Rockefeller to do this study. So, this concludes the public hearing part of the study, and we will release our report by December 1st. by December 1st. The foundation aid formula is complicated. It has many pieces, and many of those pieces, as we've been hearing in these hearings, have not been updated in a long time. So, we're trying to get feedback from the public and from experts in the area about things that can and should be changed. And so with that, I think I'll turn it over to Brian, Lisa, and Lucy to introduce themselves briefly, but we're here to hear from you.
Hi, again, I'm Brian Backstrom. I'm the Director of Education Policy Studies for the Rockefeller Institute of Government.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Lisa Partial. I'm a professor of political science at Damon University in Amherst, New York, and I'm a policy fellow at the Rockefeller Institute of Government.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lucy Sorensen. I'm an associate professor at University of Albany, and thank you all for coming out here this evening and, and sharing your thoughts. Thanks very much.
Thank you, everyone. So we are going to start testimony. Let me explain how this is going to work. I am going to call numbers, and we're going to start with 1 to 5. You are going to speak from that microphone. If you can see, there's a timer right in front of you. You have 2 minutes to speak. At your halfway point, that will turn color, and 30 seconds before it will turn color again. And I apologize in advance, but I will stop you after 2 minutes. So, if we could have speakers 1 to 5, and when you speak, can you please tell us who you are and your affiliation, if you have one?
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Simons. I'm the superintendent of schools for the East Greenbush Central School District, which is a district in Rensselaer County, right here in the Capital Region. We serve 4,000 students. I want to thank Mr. Magna and the Rockefeller Institute for the work that you are doing in studying this critical issue regarding foundation aid. I do appreciate the complexity of your work, and I do appreciate the opportunity to comment as a citizen of the state of New York, but also as an experienced school superintendent. This is my 18th year as a superintendent of schools. I've served in two different types of school districts. Currently, I am the superintendent, going into my ninth year. East Greenbush Central School District is a average wealth district. I also served for nine years in the Mohawk Valley in the Rome City School District, which is a high-needs, low-wealth school district. So, in many ways, I do understand the differences among districts, particularly average wealth compared to high-needs districts. I've had the experience of, and the benefit of, leading school systems and communities during periods in which there have been significant reductions in school aid over my 18 years. I've seen how those changes have impacted school districts, communities, including community employment levels, as well as, of course, how those changes have impacted our students. And as has been testified this afternoon, I was here earlier, there have been a lot of changes in schools since the foundation aid formula was enacted in 2007. First, I'd like to emphasize that there was no tax cap in 2007. The foundation aid formula includes an expected local contribution. Given the current tax cap formula, this contribution amount may not align with our community's expectations. Schools have struggled to gain community support for budgets which are proposed to exceed the New York State tax cap. East Greenbush, for example, our tax cap this year was 0.55%.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Adam Stewart, and I'm a school board member in the Avril Park Central School District. For the past four years, our overall enrollment has been flat. For the same period, our special needs enrollment has increased by 16%. The foundation aid formula takes into account many factors, including inflation, but in our case, it hasn't kept up. Over the past four years, inflation has outpaced our foundation aid by 7%, which is like reducing the amount of aid we get by 7%. To offset this lack of revenue, you would think we'd simply raise property taxes, but the supermajority vote required by the tax cap law ties our hands and virtually forces us to not exceed our allotted max increase. Although our voters have approved this max increase each year, it hasn't kept up with inflation. When adjusted for inflation, property taxes have actually decreased by 9% in the last three years. So, enrollment is flat, special needs enrollment is up, we have more, more expensive kids to educate. Meanwhile, foundation aid has decreased, and so has our tax revenue. We've laid off staff, increased class sizes, and cut programs, but this is unsustainable and unfair to our students, especially those on the margins of achievement. Foundation aid must not only be used to keep districts whole during inflationary years, but even more should be added to make up for the deficit caused by property tax constraints from the tax cap law. If the true goal of foundation aid is to provide equitable funding to school districts, then the minimum amount of funding must equal the current rate of inflation plus a reasonable amount to offset the limits imposed by the tax cap law. Thank you for agreeing to allow me to comment and, to some degree, vent my frustrations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jared Powers, and I'm the superintendent of the Union Springs Central School District. This is my 10th year in that role. If safe harness is eliminated and the foundation formulas only updated reflects student population loss and no other variables, my school district would stand to lose in excess of $2 million a year due to enrollment losses. To give you some perspective, that is close to 10% of our entire budget. That dollar amount is equivalent to our total expenditure in transportation, our entire payroll for our middle school. To recoup that loss in one year, we'd require a 26% tax levy increase, which we assuredly know will not happen. A 1% increase in our tax levies, $82,000. The result would be we'd have to cut where we could remain academically solvent, draw down our cash on hand, and find ourselves on the brink, brink financially in very short order. Some have suggested that we regionalize and budget better to conserve costs. We already share staff and business functions with BOSI's. We already have a sports merger with Port Byron that goes back a decade. To save money, we buy our paper in bulk, and we even reduce the amount of plastic on the trash bags that go over the lip of the trash, trash can to find savings. This coming year, our school budget is $356,000 less than last year. We are highly efficient in our spending, and our budgeting is not going to get us much further financially. We have already closed an elementary school and sold the building. People might look at my district as a wealthy lake community. That is not the case. We have expensive homes that line the lake, but the bulk of my district is made of residents who do not own lake property. This is, this property valuation distorts what is known as the expected local contribution in the foundation aid formula, because the actual valuation of our community is not reflective of the full-time resident's ability to pay the taxes at the suggested level. Our rate of students who qualify for free and reduced-priced lunches is in excess of 40%. Under the foundation aid formula, because people do not know how to, because people now not have to fill out an application under CPE, they are undercounted for aid purposes. Further, the foundation aid formula is currently constructed, only accounts for the elementary-age purple students and not those at the secondary level. However, the secondary level is where the bulk of our students in foster care, homeless, and independent find themselves. We have a growing number of E&amp;L students who are undercounted. Our special ed population continues to grow, and those costs are only weighted slightly in the foundation aid formula. Our reductions magnitude, when safe harness is eliminated, would disrupt our district to a point where I'm uncertain how long we'll be able to survive as an independent entity. Our fund balance is 4%. Our reserves are healthy but not robust, and we live within our means, never taking more from the taxpayers than we truly need to do right by them. I appreciate your time and attention, and hope that you take districts like mine into account when you develop new formulas to serve all of New York's children.
Thank you, thank you. Again, I will remind people that, please submit your written testimony as well as speaking. Thank you.
All of the written testimony will be included in the final report.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jen O'Connor. I'm Director of Partnerships and Early Childhood Policy with the Education Trust New York. We're a statewide nonprofit organization dedicated to educational equity. Our recommendations are as follows. The study should recommend against using the successful school district base cost model and instead explore alternative methodologies for base cost in consultation with school finance experts. The study should explore updates to the regional cost index to better reflect the costs of salaries and services, which have greatly increased. The study should also explore alternative student poverty measurements that move away from free and reduced-priced lunch, such as enrollment in means-tested programs like Medicaid, using both a per-pupil socioeconomic status weight and a concentrated poverty rate, using tiers of socioeconomic status with differentiated weights rather than a single yes/no poverty weight, and using consistent definitions of poverty across state agencies and initiatives, including working with the Governor's Child Poverty Reduction Advisory Council to align working definitions of poverty. The study should explore differentiated weights from multilingual learners by proficiency level and type of services and programs. Should also explore the costs associated with educating subgroups of multilingual learners, such as students with interrupted formal education. Should explore and analyze differentiated weights in funding for students with disabilities based on student needs and instructional settings. Should add additional weight for students in temporary housing and students in foster care as part of an updated formula. Should prioritize strong public transparency to ensure funds are equitably spent. We recommend the study call for the legislature to improve and reinstate the New York State school funding transparency forms. Furthermore, NISAT should publish the district-level annual state aid projects on foundation aid in an accessible and comparable manner. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we will submit written comments.
Thank you very much. Before you go, can I have 6 through 10, please? You can go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Patrick Sullivan. I'm the superintendent of schools for the Liberty Central School District, which is 90 miles northwest of New York City in Sullivan County. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for providing all stakeholders with the opportunity to share their voices. It is evident that our shared intent is to provide an adequate and equitable educational experience for each student throughout New York State. As you mentioned, I've already submitted a written testimony or concern or consideration on behalf of Liberty Central School District to express our, our considerations or concerns, which are very similar to what has been discussed by many of my esteemed colleagues already. Upon reviewing the previous public comment sessions, I'd like to reinforce some ideas for consideration as the Rockefeller Institute and New York State take their next steps. These ideas are inspired by Michael Rebel and Jessica Wolf's article, "Ensuring the Future of Fair School Funding," from Columbia University's Center for Educational Equity. Some key points to consider are the following. For us to review other states' funding models, such as looking into funding, funding models of states as Illinois, Maryland, and Oregon. First, looking at the evidence-based funding formula to ensure that we can equitably provide a high-quality or adequate education, and an evidence-based approach is using the educational research, which I'm sure you know, is to develop models which specific aggregate and per-pupil costs can be calculated, but then synergizing funding approaches, such as ensuring that we have, excuse me, if, if a new funding formula is created, consider how can we integrate this evidence-based approach with a cost-function approach? Oh, this is going faster than I thought. So with that, then, making sure to insulate, and, and looking with that where a cost-function approach is to make sure hitting targets based on the student needs. But then, we want to make sure to insulate the model from political influence, implement extra waitings for students with special needs, and establish a board to oversight as a third party. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Craig Chandler, principal at Mahanis and High School, also here representing Sanes. Updating the foundation aid formula is essential to meet shifting demographics and needs in our schools. Although we might see a decline in student numbers, the remaining students often require more resources than typical. The current formula does not address these realities. Funding should be based on specific student needs, using tiered weights for varying levels of support. This approach ensures that funds reach those with, who need them the most. Additionally, we must also recognize that many needs overlap. Our model should reflect these complexities. We must update the regional cost index and incorporate recent census data for fair funding distribution. Using the United Ways Alice data could provide a more accurate measure of poverty than traditional statistics. A new model should also factor in rising costs for security while addressing class size and mental health needs. Transparency and accountability in fund allocation remain crucial. An overlooked issue is the inequity that was caused at the implementation of the tax cap. Districts with lean per-pupil spending struggle to generate sufficient revenue, while those with higher spending are rewarded. A regionalized per-pupil expenditure metric could address these disparities, allowing flexibility in setting tax levies and ensuring the contributions align with district realities. Finally, a new model should be predictable, with any major shifts in funding phased in over time to reduce volatility. Voices across education call for a formula that is fair, flexible, predictable, and current. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Chris Sinitta, and I'm the principal of Pine Bush Elementary School in the Gilderlin School District. I'm also a member of the School Administrators Association of New York State that represents over 22,000 school building administrators and program directors. Sanes is pleased to have been an integral part of deliberations on the foundation formula. We have two high priorities for our foundation aid formula. Number one, it must meet the needs of students and staff, and two, the formula must be stable and predictable. A key component of foundation aid is the foundation amount per pupil. In 2007, that amount was estimated at $5,258. Effectively educating a student in 2024 is far different than the 2007 cost. The changing needs of students, the additional roles that schools take on to meet those needs, and the many unfunded requirements placed on districts must be included in the per, per-pupil foundation aid calculations. School districts are rarely able to adequately project budget needs due to the constant manipulations of the statutory formula. The unilateral revisions to the foundation aid formula components are not helpful to districts. The revised formula must use reasonable variables that are applied consistently as the statute requires. Since the pandemic, student absenteeism has increased dramatically. An examination of foundation aid must account for the ever-changing nature of student enrollment with a calculation not based on a single point in time. Regional cost indices used in the foundation aid formula need to be reexamined. Districts in very close geographic proximity often have varying regional cost indices applied, but the actual regional costs remain very similar. Sanes is appreciative of the efforts of the governor and legislature to begin a public conversation on foundation aid. Just as education is the backbone of our state's future, foundation aid is the infrastructure of state aid to schools. We must continue full foundation funding and provide a minimum increase for all school districts.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Erin Lloyd LeBumbard. I am an 18-year veteran special education teacher at Skylerville Central School. I am also president of the teachers' union, coach two varsity sports, am a taxpayer and a resident of the district, and my two daughters attend the elementary school. I am extremely vested in the district, and its financial security is utmost, of the utmost importance to me. When the executive budget was announced in January, Skylerville was slated to use, lose 17% of our foundation aid funding, over $2 million of the district budget. Such a loss would have been absolutely devastating to our district and our community. District officials, politicians, and NISAT representatives held a roundtable discussion after the cuts were announced to discuss the adverse effects that this would have on our district. While these cuts ended up being reversed through the tireless advocacy from our community, NISAT and the allies in the legislature, we are deeply concerned that the coming changes to the foundation aid formula, if done incorrectly, could put us in a similar situation again. As a special education teacher, coach, district leader, and mother, I can assure you that square pegs do not fit in round holes. The foundation aid formula is a one-size-fits-all model. It is a square peg, and rural districts like Skylerville are the round holes. The formula does not take into account the needs of rural farming communities like Skylerville. Skylerville is land-rich with cows and corn. The formula is valuing land for condos and commercial use, not grazing and growing. Our land benefits the entire state and for food and resources. Skylerville relies on the foundation aid to adequately staff our school and educate our students. Skylerville is an amazing district. We have phenomenal teachers. We lead the area in academic performance and opportunities for our students. Proper funding from foundation aid is crucial for our district to maintain and continue to offer our students a great education. The foundation aid formula needs to be restructured to accommodate differences as communities, rural and urban, large and small. The state has no problem assessing whether teachers can differentiate to meet the needs of their students. The state needs to recognize the different needs of our rural communities and craft a foundation aid formula that supports them, not punishes them, and restructure the recal, and calculations to equitable services for all New York students and communities.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Hi. Hello, I am Katie DePiro. I am a special education teacher, president of the Capital Region BOSI's Faculty Association, and a member of the Gilderlin School District Board of Education. My role affords me frequent opportunities to visit the Albany CTE Center, where I, where I witness firsthand students from across the Capital Region developing skills in welding, electrical, HVAC, auto repair, nursing, and numerous other trades. By adequately funding our schools and investing in these career tech programs, the state is helping to ensure a new generation of high-skill, high-tech workers. These individuals will remain in New York State contributing to our workforce and tax base for decades to come. However, the foundation aid formula has not been updated since its creation in 2007, and some elements still based on census data from 2000. Consequently, in many districts across New York State, state aid no longer aligns with the district's actual needs. While many districts have experienced enrollment declines, they still require resources to meet the rising costs of maintaining buildings, upgrading infrastructure, and retaining staff to provide for students' basic educational needs. It is important to note that while BOSI's does not receive foundation aid, the state's, the state BOSI's aid formula also requires updating to provide, to provide and address Foundation Aid, the state Bosse's Aid Formula also requires updating to provide and address the growing needs of students statewide. As a Gildrelin Board of Education member, I work alongside fellow board members and school administrators to review budget priorities identified by our students, teachers, and community members. These stakeholders consistently emphasize the need to provide high-quality academic programs, maintain current class sizes, and offer services to meet our students' increasing needs. These programs reflect our community's commitment to education and the well-being of our students. The time has come to update the Foundation Aid Formula to better serve our students. This action is crucial for ensuring that our education system can contribute to the needs of the evolving needs of our communities and prepare our youth for the challenges of tomorrow. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Can I have 16 to 20?
Good evening. I am the proud superintendent of the Williamson Central School District. My name is Bridget Ashton. We are located in Wayne County and are situated within the Wayne Finger Lakes region. Williamson is touted as the core of apple country in Wayne County and is one of the largest producers of apples, not only in the state, but also in the nation. Williamson is a proud rural community, where the school district is the heart and hub of our community. We have deep roots, strong values, and we produce bright futures. The fiscal paradigm of our district parallels the narrative of many other rural school districts across the state. Our current school enrollment is 950 students. This represents a declining enrollment of approximately 11% over the last 10 years and 32% over the last two decades. Despite declining enrollments, the district has demonstrated an increasing need for student services and supports. Additionally, our student population has seen a tremendous uptick in the percentage of economically disadvantaged students, and has nearly doubled in the last 15 years to 55%. I'd like to thank you in advance for your consideration of the following. Given that the Foundation Aid Formula is under review with potential for revision, please ensure that all data points utilized in the next iteration are current. Inclusion of additional weights and measures must be factored into the formula to reflect the composition and needs of our students. Student poverty measures must be updated to reflect more accurate representations of our communities, especially in light of community eligibility and the resulting number of families who are not completing household income surveys. Please ensure that the calculation is inclusive of our professional responsibility and moral imperative to effectively deliver supports and services to all students, including those that are attached to being economically disadvantaged, special education, English-language learners, mental health, SEL, and pro-social skill development. Declining enrollments, as I already mentioned, are a complex issue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, first of all, my apologies for missing 11 to 15. We have 11 to 15 lined up. Is that right? Okay. My apologies. Again, please submit your testimony in written form. It will all be read and put into the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ellen Lloyd. I'm the proud superintendent of the Marion Central School District, which is part of the Wayne Finger Lakes Bosse's. We're located in northwestern Wayne County and have enrollment of 664 students, and we pride ourselves on being small but mighty. We're a community school. We envision ourselves as a place that's truly the hub for our community, and we maintain lots of services and programming for our community through our school funding and through additional grant funding. The Foundation Formula was created to help create an equitable education for all students, but currently, we're facing a lot of inequity. Experiences and opportunities for students in the Marion Central School District look drastically different from those even a few miles away from us. Like many rural districts, over 60% of Marion's funding comes from state aid, and when the Marion Central School District puts forth a 2% tax levy, that raises about $150,000 for the district. Safe Harmless, as you can imagine, with our declining enrollment is a huge piece of the current formula and that has a huge impact on Marion. If that funding was removed, based on the current Foundation Aid Formula, Marion would stand to lose over $3 million in Foundation Aid. And just for perspective, our overall budget is about $22 million. So, our only alternatives in that situation are to deplete reserves and make drastic cuts. We've moved forward with cuts. This past budget cycle, Marion cut about 27% of their positions in the district. That's almost 15% of our staff. So, I'd close by saying one of our core values at Marion is that students are at the heart of what we do. I would ask that the new funding formula is equitable for our rural students and supports them similar to their suburban and urban counterparts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Connor Leclair, and I'm the managing director of finance for KIP Capital Region Public Charter Schools, the largest charter school organization in the capital region. While I've been in this current position for two years, I've spent my entire professional career in different seats within the education finance sector, as I was previously a school district auditor with a local CPA firm and a finance analyst at the SUNY Charter Schools Institute, New York's largest charter school authorizer. Through this work, I have personally worked with 250, more than 250 public schools in New York State, and have seen the impacts of Foundation Aid on schools with an enrollment of 30 students to schools with more than tens of thousands of students. And that connection between enrollment and Foundation Aid is what I want to spend a few moments talking about today. Enrollment trends and where parents send their kids to receive an education has drastically changed in the past 25 years. 25 years ago, there were no charter schools in New York State, while today, there are 359. Those schools now serve a larger percentage of economically disadvantaged students in two-thirds of the districts in which they are located, and in one-third of charter schools, more than 90% of the students qualify as economically disadvantaged. This was not considered when the formula was created, and currently, both the Foundation Aid Formula, as well as the Charter Tuition Calculator, do not allow or require for the differentiation of resources for schools that disproportionately serve these students, we know require the most resources to be supported. The Foundation Aid Formula should be revised to reflect disconnect and provide additional resources at the school level. With this in mind, I'd like to underscore a few recommendations. Revise and rebuild the Foundation Aid Formula, and with that, revisit the method for calculating aid for students with disabilities. I think both district and charter leaders can agree that the premise of the Foundation Aid Formula does not reflect the modern understanding of student needs. And two, include charter schools in a rebuilt formula. Without the inclusion of these schools in the formula, Foundation Aid is excluding hundreds of thousands of public schools from its calculation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Kayla, and I am a parent from Albany and an education advocate with the Alliance for Quality Education. My three children all attend New Scotland Elementary School in grades five, three, and kindergarten. At New Scotland Elementary School, 65% of students are Black or Brown students, and nearly half are economically disadvantaged, with issues plaguing our families like homelessness and food insecurity. Additionally, 4.7% of our students are English-language learners, and 32% of our students are with disabilities. In the wake of the pandemic and with the recent arrival of hundreds of asylum-seeking families, our children need more than just basic support. They need access to qualified teachers, social workers, family liaisons, and a support tailored for English-language learners and students with disabilities. I am fortunate to have these services available to my children at New Scotland, however, so many others in my community are not. Recently, I had the opportunity to give a presentation at Albany High School to students working on their civil service capstone project. At least a quarter of the students did not speak English, and instead of having a qualified interpreter, they were grouped up to their English-speaking student peers, who were tasked with explaining material that they themselves were struggling to understand. Every child in New York has a constitutional right to a sound, basic education, and it's our government's responsibility to uphold this promise across every corner of the state. The Foundation Aid Formula established in 2007 was meant to ensure that New York State met this obligation, though it took until 2023 to bring schools to full funding levels. Over the past 17 years, and especially through the upheaval of the last four years since the pandemic began, the needs of our students have changed dramatically. We urgently need the Foundation Aid Formula to be updated to reflect the real cost of educating today's students, ensuring every public school has the resources to support all its learners. Adjustments to the formula must be made on the basis of how much it costs to ensure public schools are getting the resources to meet their students' needs. Underfunding public education is neither sustainable nor acceptable. Our state's fiscal circumstances should not dictate the true cost of educating a child. We cannot afford to deprive our kids of the resources and opportunities they need to succeed. Their future, of our children, and the future of our state depends on it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank the Institute for hosting this meeting and others around the state as part of your study of Foundation Aid and for allowing me to provide comments this evening. My name is Addie Jenny, and I'm the legislative council for the New York State Council of the Sheet Metal Workers, representing the business managers of the Sheet Metal Air, Rail, and Transportation Union locals across the state. A large portion of the work performed by members of these locals is in the area of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, including those in school buildings. They install and maintain HVAC systems, including testing and balancing the systems to ensure they are operating as designed in compliance with the mechanical code. The council is concerned about the indoor air quality in our state's school buildings and the impact that poor indoor air quality has on student health, learning, and the student's overall success. While I know that today's hearing is focused on Foundation Aid, not building aid, I hope to highlight the need to look at the various school funding categories as a whole, instead of in silos that allow glaring problems in our schools to be overlooked and unaddressed. If students are not healthy enough to attend or benefit from school due to poor indoor air quality, our Foundation Aid dollars being spent in vain. Also, what is the impact on faculty and staff in our schools and the ability for them to provide instruction and services in an unhealthy workplace? Building aid does not tend to get as much attention as Foundation Aid, likely because the public does not understand the convoluted formulas and categories used to fund our schools, and that Foundation Aid is just one category. But the shortcomings of building aid should be just as concerning when considering the impact things like poor indoor air quality have on a child's ability to learn. Including in building aid is funding for building condition surveys, but the reports required under regulation are nothing more than an inventory of systems, not an inspection of the system to ensure it is operating in compliance with design and therefore compliant with the mechanical code. Funding is a key issue in ensuring that these systems are up to snuff, so to speak. As the state looks for guidance in school aid, it's hard to educate a student who is unable to attend school because of communicable illness, asthma attacks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll submit my written remarks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is there anybody else who is registered to speak? Okay, we're gonna keep the, we're gonna keep the mics open for about 45 minutes, in case we have anybody else that is, that wants to speak. Certainly do not have to sit here. You are welcome to do so if you want to. Again, if you would like to provide your written testimony, please do so on the Rockefeller Institute website. Thank you, guys, for coming, and like I said, we'll keep the mics open.